Mr. President, the time is now 9:00 a.m., and you can call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Appreciate it. Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, August 13th, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting. And if you could all stand, if you can. If not, stay in your seat, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. And today, we'll have our Employee of the Month lead us in the pledge. Go ahead.
For allegiance in the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you for doing that. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. You did good. Mr. Clerk, can you review with us the public participation rules for today?
Of course. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the public, live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom, please click the Interpretation Globe icon in the Webinar Controls, and then select the Spanish language. At this time, I would like my colleague Victor Hernandez to provide these instructions in Spanish.
Good morning, President Slocum, and Honorable Supervisors, and Mr. Callagie, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Niblin, all county staff, members of the public. Victor Hernandez with On Point Language Solutions. Buenos dias. Les queremos dejar saber a todos ustedes que las instrucciones para poder participar en lo que es la reunión de hoy se pueden encontrar en lo que es el orden del día que ha sido publicado. Estas instrucciones proporcionan información sobre cómo presentar sus comentarios por escrito y también cómo participar a través de Zoom. Se les ofrecerá interpretación en directo, es decir, simultáneamente, para toda la reunión. Y para poder acceder a los servicios de interpretación en directo, ustedes que tendrán que hacer clic en lo que es un icono de un globo, es decir, un mundo que aparecerá al fondo de su pantalla, y después seleccionar su idioma. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Okay, next on the agenda is Board Member Remarks for this morning. Supervisor Mueller, Supervisor Corzo.
Mr. President, for the record, all the supervisors are present.
Yes, they are. Thank you. I've noticed.
Thank you, President Slocum. I would like to recognize and express my condolences to the family of Kirsten Castle and her full-term unborn child. Kirsten was a mother, a beloved mother to four children who lost her life on August 4th, as well as the life of her unborn child. She was about nine months pregnant. According to her family, Kirsten was self-driven and focused. She was a great mother and a strong, resilient woman. My heart goes out to her precious children and family as they navigate this unimaginable trauma. After over a year of working urgently -- oh, sorry, let me say before that that it is suspected that this was a domestic violence case, and it is being charged as a double homicide. So after over a year of working with the Domestic Violence Council to make our county safer for families, we are faced with this glaring reality and reminder of the immediate need in our community. So I want to hold Kirsten and her family in my heart and ask that you do as well as we carry on the work with even more determination, knowing that this tragedy and many others should have been prevented. And so I'd like to ask for a brief moment of silence in her honor and that of her unborn child. Thank you. I'd also like to acknowledge Reverend Christie Denham. Reverend Denham lost her life due to pancreatic cancer on June 19th. She was a single mother to two sons, and she accepted the call to become a pastor at the Congregational Church of Belmont, which later became the Congregational Church of the Peninsula in 1999. And that church honored her with the title of Pastor Amaretta this past February. In her 20 years, Reverend Denham pastored young men incarcerated at Hillcrest Juvenile Hall, served as a chaplain to the Belmont Police Department, and fostered cooperation with many faiths across the Peninsula. And it was that passion that led her to co-found the Peninsula Multi-Faith Coalition, an organization that brings together faith leaders to build bridges of understanding and respect. And she was also involved in sponsoring Martin Luther K. Jr. Day of Service in San Mateo County. One quote from her that I'd like to end with is as follows: "I will live for as long as I'm needed here. I will love for all eternity." So my condolences to her and the entire community affected impacted by her loss. And then one last one, and I do want to acknowledge that all of these are a little heavy, so thank you for listening. On July 20th, here at County Center, there was a horrific incident that impacted many people that were present that day outside of the courthouse in the middle of County Center. And I was actually there as well to witness how law enforcement and our officers, our deputy sheriffs responded to the immediate need. It was a really horrific incident. I won't go into details, but I will say that I was deeply impacted by it and came face-to-face with that trauma. And I just want to acknowledge the folks from our sheriff's office who responded immediately and even were injured in, you know, doing what they had to do to help this person in distress. And I want to acknowledge their professionalism and compassion and the trauma that they honestly go through just in the day-to-day of their jobs. So I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to Sergeant Jimmy Chan, Deputy Jim Christman, Deputy Christopher Crowell, Deputy John Baggis, as well as the many other deputy sheriffs and law enforcement and county staff who were present that day and helped in one way or another. So I'd like to recognize everyone and thank them deeply for their service to this community. Thank you.
Supervisor Pine, any comments? Supervisor, no. I have a couple of remarks here. First of all, you remember, colleagues, that August 7th, we had a special board meeting. And at that time, Supervisor Mueller mentioned that he would like to come off the subcommittee regarding Article 34. And I volunteered to step in, to take over Ray's place without objection, if that's okay with my colleagues. And so that subcommittee will now be Supervisor Corzo and myself for the remainder of this year. Thank you all. Big event coming up. Big event coming up. Civics 101. One of the best things that we do, I think, during the year to educate the public about the functions of county government and how things operate. But would encourage anyone who's interested in learning about county programs and services and how this all fits together to join the Civics 101 Academy. And it's a nine-week course held on Wednesday evenings from September 4th through October 30th. The applicants must be 18 years old, at least 18 years old, and live or work in San Mateo County, and commit to the one-night-per-week attendance. From all the people I've talked to that have attended this, it's really an amazing event. And thank you to Eric Foregard and the county staff who put this on. It's truly an educational event. And if you want more information on this, you can go to the county executive's website, on the San Mateo County website, obviously, and learn more and even apply. So Civics 101, very worthwhile investment of time. And finally, I wanted to honor the memory of a person who some of you may remember. I certainly worked with him and remember him well, Jerry Okada. And he was a longtime part of our San Mateo County family. And he was born in 1947 in San Mateo, attended Aragon High School, and then he went to San Jose State. After graduation, Jerry joined the Army Reserves. That was in 1971, serving for six years and was honorably discharged as a Staff Sergeant in 1977. So he was indeed a veteran. In 1972, Jerry began his career with San Mateo County as a capital projects manager in the then General Services Department, which was part of Public Works. Jerry married Diana that same year. They had two children, Kevin and Lisa. Both have followed his footsteps in public service. Kevin is with Public Works in Burlingame. Lisa, a daughter, is our Deputy Director of Human Resources. Jerry worked for our county for some 37 years. He worked on hundreds of projects. I remember well working with him. He worked on projects like the Children's Home on Tower Road, the Canyon Oaks Facility, the old courthouse refurbishment. And he recently shared with daughter Lisa that he did the lettering. He did the lettering on the county seal. Upon his retirement from the county in 2009, his colleagues presented Jerry with a plaque. And that plaque read in part, quote, "Like the courthouse dome, you have been a standing symbol of pride, perseverance, and achievement." In short, Jerry was beloved by all. That's a true statement. He had the kindest heart, great attitude, and a spirit dedicated to public service. To Jerry's family, we send our heartfelt sympathies. Thank you for your service, Jerry. And that concludes, I believe, Board Member Comments, except I think I might have skipped Mr. Mueller. No comments. Okay, very good. So now we'll do public comment. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the public, you can comment on any county-related matters that are not on this meeting agenda or listed on this regular meeting agenda or listed on Consent Agenda or Close Session. And we'll take a public comment from Chambers first, and then we'll take comments from Zoom. I have one speaker slip from Deacon Lauren Patton McCombs.
Good morning. Excuse me. I think you know who I am, but I will say it again. My name is Deacon Lauren Patton McCombs, and I serve in the Diocese of California. I'm a member of Peninsula Solidarity Cohort in fixing San Mateo. I am a longtime resident and have lived in our county for over 40 years. During the pandemic, Sheriff Belanos instituted the policy that inmates could not receive personal mail in April of 2021. I am coming before you to ask Sheriff Corpus to allow our inmates to be able to receive personal mail again, just like Santa Clara, San Francisco, and Los Angeles. At our first Independent Advisory Commission meeting on July 12th, Sheriff Corpus said that inmates in our jails don't receive personal mail because of the possibility of illegal drugs being included in the physical mail that inmates would receive. I would suggest, why not reach out to the counties who are already allowing this to happen and to find out just exactly what they are doing to deal with this problem? Unfortunately, there's already a lawsuit with addressing this basic human right violation of not receiving mail in our county jails. In addition, Sheriff Corpus last fall renewed the contract for another three years with the company in Florida. And all they get is a fuzzy image of what their mail might be. A strong independent oversight committee could look at the issue, bring experts who have already solved this problem in other counties, and then finally, they could make recommendations to the sheriff and the Board of Supervisors. Now, I can't say to you how much this means to get a piece of mail from your family. This is from my granddaughter. This is on Valentine's Day. I'm physically holding this, looking at it. It's beautiful. And I treasure it. To an inmate, a birthday card or even a card that merely says, "I'm just thinking of you" can help ease the loneliness of being separated from their own families. To incarcerated inmates who are oftentimes cut off from their family and friends, receiving mail can be the only lifeline connecting families together. So I would ask Sheriff Corpus that this right needs to be reinstated as soon as possible because receiving personal mail should be allowed within our jail system. Thank you for the extra time and your service to our county.
Thank you. No additional speakers from Chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you. As a reminder, this is for unagendized items as well as consent items beginning at Item 8 through the end of the agenda at Close Session. Four speakers, Kevin Rennie, followed by Martin Fox. Kevin, please unmute and begin. Kevin Rennie, thank you.
Hi, Supervisors and staff. My name is Kevin Rennie. I'm a Menlo Park resident of the Willow's Neighborhood. I'm speaking today to elevate the need for greater bicycle and pedestrian safety, more specifically with schools starting. Already started or just in a couple of weeks, I wanted, again, to elevate the need to support safe routes to school. More specifically, I wanted to ask for advocacy on the Coleman Ringwood Project that has started over 20 years ago. I have much appreciated the recent progress on this project over the past year. But in the last couple of months, the updates I've gotten from the Menlo Park staff that's working in coordination with the county, Menlo Park staff said they had documents all over to the county, and they're just waiting to start the pilot. I've reached out to the county staff and supervisor. I haven't got any updates, no next steps. I would like a timeline, updates, anything, when a pilot's going to roll out to support safe routes to school and protect our children. Best regards. I yield back.
Thank you, Kevin. Martin Fox, followed by AMR, or Am. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, my fellow veterans. President Slocum and County Attorney Mr. Niblin, Supervisors Canepa, Corzo, Mueller, and County Executive Mr. Callagie. Thank you for your service to the county. Please make the county safer and healthier for persons living with serious mental illness and their families by supporting the vigorous implementation of the Governor's Care Court program. Make the reintroduction and passage of the repeal of the Lannister Short Act a top county state legislative priority. The immediate implementation of Senate Bill 43 a top county health department priority, and the defunding of disability rights California and Law Foundation of Silicon Valley a top county federal legislative priority. California's residents needed orthoedics-inspired compassionate mental health treatment system. California's Lannister Short Act of 1967 is one of the 10 worst involuntary mental health treatment laws in the 50 states. The LPS Act's racist, dangerous, and grave disability treatment qualification criteria continues to kill people. Parents of adult children living with serious mental illness who are treatment-resistant and live in parts of county outside of Hillsborough or Atherton cannot afford to help their loved ones escape injury and death by going to states like Utah to get the treatment they need. They have to confront the evils of the Scientologist-inspired ACLU-supported Lannister Short Act that criminalizes persons living with serious mental illness if it doesn't seriously injure or kill them first. Please make defunding the intellectual, legally bankrupt Law Foundation of Silicon Valley and Disability Rights California a top county federal legislative priority. The reintroduction and passage of the Lannister Short Act a top county state legislative priority, and the immediate implementation of Senate Bill 43, the highest county health department priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Two speakers, Am, followed by Bill Newell. Am, please unmute and begin.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, dear spectacular supervisors of San Mateo County. My name is Amr Higgy. I'm a longtime resident of San Mateo County in Redwood City. I spent close to 30 years in technology and almost two decades in real estate development. I did the unthinkable back in 2017 with an elderly gentleman, Mr. Robert Galette on Vera Street. And I was a neighbor of his. And the city of Redwood City had ended up kicking this gentleman out of his home because he wasn't able to take care of his 10 properties. I was a neighbor. I was a developer, an accredited investor, and, you know, working on multimillion-dollar projects. And I did the unthinkable. I had met Robert several times, and he told me about his situation. And I also, Thomas Syllipin, had also reached out to me to put a bid on the property and, you know, to help the gentleman out. Unfortunately, I never got the bid. And the property was, you know, it was kicked out, and it was fenced off and boarded up. And I ended up later discovering Mr. Galette on El Camino in Home Depot. And I talked to him, and he showed me an article that was posted that he had less than 30 days to fix his properties. The city, Veronica Ramirez, Mayor Bain at the time, everyone voted to kick this gentleman out of his home, and he was sleeping in his car. That's how I discovered him. And I asked him, again, I had interest in the property before. It's a large property and a real estate developer. And he never wanted to sell the property. And anyways, we agreed to get me onto the title of the property to help him get back into the homes. You know, over two incidents, this story has a lot of information to it, but I will kind of speed things up here in a matter of time. Anyways, I am still getting articles posted. I was charged with six felonies.
Excuse me, sir. You have to wrap it up. Two minutes has expired.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much. I was charged with six felonies in 18 years in prison. And I kind of, I could not believe the audacity of the office there. Nobody came to ask me about what happened. Yep. So I'm still today, I got an article that was posted in March. Mr. Wagstaff and Sean Gallagher are still--
Thank you for those comments. Next speaker?
Thank you. It looks like that person dropped somehow, but we have Bill Newell. Please unmute and begin.
Thank you, County Board, for this opportunity to comment. I'm a member of the Coalition for Safer San Mateo County, and I want to point out county taxpayers have paid out more than $13.4 million due to sheriff office misconduct in the past years. Most recently, a record settlement of $8 million was paid in July for a sexual discrimination harassment, possible assault of a sheriff's deputy team member who was a Medal of Honor recipient and only the second woman who ever qualified for the SWAT team. This deputy reported and filed reports of harassment for nearly two years, but nothing was ever done to investigate or protect this deputy until after she filed her lawsuit. The question is, where is the accountability and transparency for the criminal actions by the harassing deputies? Is this how a female deputy was disrespected? How can the public feel safe? A failure analysis that looks at current sheriff office policy and procedures should be done by the Oversight Board, which is the self-declared powers now of the County Board, not anyone else. Real oversight can and reduce the risks and liabilities of our staff, our taxpayers, and our public at large. And I just want to add, the only way that this whole matter came to light was through the media and through the court records. No other oversight brought this to light. And this is a clear example of where oversight could have made a difference. And $13 million of taxpayer money is unacceptable, and the safety of our community is unacceptable. This is the kind of internal culture that continues in the sheriff's office. So we need to know what's going on in the sheriff's office. What's accountability has occurred for the harassing deputies, this woman's supervisor, and three other deputies which forced her into early retirement? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes this public comment.
Thank you. Thank you to all the members of the public that commented during public comment. We'll turn now for a motion to set the agenda and approve the consent.
Make the motion to set the agenda and approve the Consent Agenda items.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Director Rollcall, Supervisor Pine, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
And President Slocum? Yes. Thank you. Presentations and awards is our next area. Item number one underneath Presentations is to honor Nadia Guzman as Employee of the Month for August 2024, and authorize the President of the Board to sign the commendation. And thank you again for leading the pledge. Mr. Executive?
Thank you, President Slocum, members of the Board. It's always kind of the highlight of my month to really highlight one of our incredible employees. And as you mentioned, the month of August, we have Nadia Guzman, who has just done a tremendous job as a care counselor in the Human Services Agency. As you know, that's a very difficult job, dealing with kids in crisis. And two of the incidents that really came to light was that she was instrumental in assisting a grandmother in navigating the probate application process and completing all the documents that were needed to be filled out for probate to secure guardianship of a grandchild. That is a complex situation. And whenever you're dealing with a child in a situation like this, it's also a very emotional situation. And it really requires patience and care and kindness. And certainly, Nadia exhibited all of those. And then a supervisor also wrote about Nadia's expertise in translation during a very difficult forensic interview on a scary medical situation. And really, what stood out to me was the supervisors noting that her language was beautiful, but her demeanor, her kindness, and her empathy transcended the language. This is the exact type of employee that we want in those situations. And Nadia, you are a shining example of everything good about our employees. So we have thousands and thousands of great employees. You really exemplify what we talk about when we talk about caring, creating that remarkable experience for everyone that we come in contact with. Just so proud of you and so proud to recognize you as Employee of the Month for August 2024.
Come on up. Thank you, Mr. Callagie.
Thank you so much. Sorry, I'm really shy. This is really an honor for me. I truly love working with families. I kind of just think, like, what if this was one of my family members? I would want someone to help me out this way as well. So thank you. I'm really honored.
Thank you. Director Cunningham, do you want to have a few comments?
Sure. Thank you so much, Board President Slocum and honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, for shining a well-deserved spotlight on my colleague Nadia Guzman. As Mr. Callagie explained, Nadia shows up for work in a way that really exemplifies the values that underpin the work that we do in the Human Services Agency. The examples that Mr. Callagie shared really show that when families engage with our child welfare system, it can be not only stressful but scary. And to have somebody who provides translation services, which can be an additional barrier, an additional reason for the family's experience in the child welfare system to be stressful. Not only does Nadia do that with technical excellence, but she does it with caring and concern and support, and that is felt by the clients that we serve. And I think that's really remarkable that the acknowledgement came not just from us at the Human Services Agency, who we are so proud of Nadia, but came from the clients and the partners that we work with. And I think that's really remarkable to see the effect that she has in showing up the way that she does, day in and day out, to support families going through very challenging circumstances. So thank you so much for your recognition.
Thank you. I'm assuming that there are members of Nadia's team seated behind you two. Is that true? You guys want to stand up and be recognized? There you go. Thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate it. Do we have the check?
The check is in the mail, but would you like to-- The check is in the mail, but would you, would you like to, would you like to take a photo with the Employee of the Month?
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. That'd be great. Thank you. Nadia, we will be getting you.
designating August 2024 as Child Support Awareness Month. Supervisor Noelia Corzo.
Thank you, President Slocum. I would like to share that August is Child Support Awareness Month. It's an opportunity to bring attention to the crucial issue impacting many families throughout our county. This month is a reminder of our collective duty to ensure the well-being and development of all children in our community. And I'd like to emphasize the importance of providing every child with the financial support and the healthy family environment that they deserve regardless of their circumstances. Raising a child is a shared responsibility, and child support plays a key role in creating stable and nurturing environments, ensuring that children have access to essential resources such as healthcare and education. It's also really important for making sure that if a child is being raised in two households, that they have a similar lifestyle and similar support in both of those households. So by proclaiming August as Child Support Awareness Month, we stand with communities nationwide in raising awareness, dispelling misconceptions and stigma, and fostering open dialogue about the importance of financial responsibility in strengthening family bonds and contributing to a brighter future for everyone. This county is committed to providing critical resources to support this critical safety net through our Department of Child Support Services. And at this time, I'd like to invite Rita Cortez, Administrative Division Manager of Child Support Services, to share more information and accept this proclamation.
Thank you. Honorable Board of Supervisors, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Niblin. My name is Rita Cortez and I'm the Administrative Division Manager for the San Mateo County Department of Child Support Services. I'm honored to have the opportunity to speak with you today about our program as a representative for my director, Kim Conio, who regrettably couldn't be here today, as well as for department staff who is sitting here in the chambers. I've been with Child Support Services for more than 28 years and have witnessed firsthand its evolution from a punitive collection agency to a department striving to work with parents, supporting both of them to support their children. The uniqueness of the Child Support Services program is that we assist any family. There are no income requirements or limits. Services are not based on a person's gender, identity, sexual orientation, or ethnic background. An applicant can be the person paying support or the person receiving support. There are basically no costs for the services we provide. We simply work with families where parents don't live under the same roof and are trying to navigate their financial obligations to their children. While August is the month to raise awareness about our services, our program has had many successes over the past year. We have a wonderful partnership with the Family Law Facilitator, where they reserve appointment slots specifically for our customers who need assistance filing court documents or seeking legal advice in the areas of custody, visitation, reimbursement for the other parent for medical costs, or any other family law-related issues that must be presented to the court for resolution. Prior to this partnership, we would simply send our customers off with a phone number and a flyer or a website. Now we can schedule the appointment, send all appointment information and reminders, and answer any questions prior to their meeting. This collaborative approach benefits our customers to navigate the court system, but also benefits our caseworkers who can be a part of resolving a problem rather than simply referring someone on and wishing them the best. The partnership has worked so well this past year that, starting this month, the Family Law Facilitator has increased the number of appointments available to our customers even though they haven't experienced some cuts to their funding. We want to thank the Family Law Facilitator for this important collaboration and partnership and appreciate all their efforts to make it successful. We have also been piloting, providing flexible services to families who seek our services. For many years, if you sought services from our department, it was a one-size-fits-all approach. Even with both, even when both parents were on the same page about some of our automated tactics and the negative impact it had on their family, we were unable to make any changes. Now we can limit or suppress some of those actions that are detrimental to families and the co-parenting relationship. It has reinforced for our group and hopefully for the public that Child Support Services is here to help. These are just a few examples, but we have many initiatives we are working on to ensure we establish reasonable orders, provide the services the public needs, and serve our customers in their co-parenting journey. We have a dedicated and exemplary staff, and we know this as we consistently rank in the top 10 in the state for our overall performance in establishing orders and collecting current and past due support. On behalf of my director, management, and all of the Child Support Services staff, I'd like to extend our sincere appreciation for this proclamation. We are very proud of our program and the work that we do, and we are grateful for the opportunity to share a bit of our work with everyone here today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I'd just like to share a little bit, a little short personal story real quick about child support and its kind of impact in my life. So I grew up in this community and my parents were divorced when I was about 10. And my mom made the choice never to seek child support. And then, you know, I, I grew up, even when my dad was around, pretty much in poverty and continued to do that all of my childhood. And when, you know, when my son was about 10, I came to this realization that I didn't really want to be a part of continuing that cycle of allowing, you know, difficult conversations and discomfort to mean that my son wouldn't have what he deserved and what he needed. And, and I sought services from, from your office and your team and, and they were an amazing support. So I just wanted to share that because I think it's time we de-stigmatize child support and what it actually means and what is it, what it is for. So thank you. And with that, I'd like to motion to approve this resolution, this proclamation, sorry.
I'll second it.
We ask for public comment. No speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand in Zoom to comment for item two, Child Support Awareness Month. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Kanaba?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It's appreciated. Item number three on the agenda is a presentation of a resolution honoring and commending the Pacific Beach Coalition upon being recognized as the 2024 Californian Nonprofit of the Year. Supervisor Mueller?
Thank you, President Slocum. So today, we get to go ahead and, and honor Lynn Adams and the Pacific Beach Coalition, uh, Pacific Beach Coalition, excuse me. I can't express enough, as the supervisor of District Three, the impact that the Pacific Beach Coalition has both on youth in the community and the ecosystem, our, our beach ecosystems throughout the county. My, both of my children were participating in these programs prior to me becoming supervisor. And if you go out to the coast and you see how many youth are going on every weekend and cleaning up and learning about the ecosystems there in the coastal environments, you get an impact. You really start to understand the work that this nonprofit does and really how its culture changing. But as a public official, to know that this work is taking place, that a nonprofit is doing it and cleaning up the beaches in this manner, and understanding what that means in terms of resources saved for both the state and the county, that people are doing this work free of charge out of the compassion of their heart, it really starts to impact you. I have a resolution today to read, to, to commend them on the work that they've done. And so I'll just go ahead and read that now. Whereas the Pacific Beach Coalition has been engaging volunteers since 1997 with the mission of an organized and consistent approach to cleaning beaches and creeks through volunteer power to protect and maintain a healthy coastal ecosystem and environment for residents, visitors, and wildlife. And whereas the Pacific Beach Coalition began in Pacifica but expanded to Daly City in 2007, Pillar Point in 2013, Montara in 2014, Foster City in 2022, and continues to look for opportunities to expand scope and activities to protect bayside and coastside beaches throughout San Mateo County. And whereas the Pacific Beach Coalition has engaged over 12,000 volunteers, removed 44,813 pounds of trash and recyclables, diverted 234,117 cigarette filters from contaminating ocean waters, removed over nine tons of weeds, mulched over two acres of Coastal Trail, and planted 727 native plants on Coastal Trail, all of this in 2023 alone. And whereas the Pacific Beach Coalition, in addition to improving the local ecosystem through action, also provides a robust education program with the general community and through schools, teaching the importance of reducing, reusing, recycling, and proper disposal and the human impact to the coastal environment to foster the next generation of environmental leaders and protect the future of San Mateo County's coastline. And whereas the Pacific Beach Coalition has been named the Nonprofit of the Year by the Assembly Member Mark Berman for Assembly District 23 in honor of California Nonprofit Day on June 5, 2024, in coordination with the California Association of Nonprofits, whose mission is to celebrate nonprofits and the contributions made throughout the state of California. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Mateo, State of California hereby commends the Pacific Beach Coalition. And on behalf of all residents, expresses sincere, sincere congratulations and appreciations for its contributions to the people and land of San Mateo County. With that, I'd like to go ahead and invite Lynn Adams up, the Executive Director of the Pacific Beach Coalition, to share a few words.
Thank you, County of San Mateo Board of Supervisors and County Executive. It's an honor to be here and it's an honor to make a difference in the county and to raise awareness ecologically. And our, our philosophy is that experiences teach us more than sitting at home, watching TV, hanging out, right? And it used to be that the, when we first started, when I first started and we kind of gathered people, people looked at each other and said, you pick up litter? Yeah, I pick up litter. I thought I was the only one. And now we all know that we're not the only one. And our greatest hope is that the world learns about litter and picks it up because there's a lot to learn from that. And over the course of the years, we've learned so much about the flow of litter, the harms of litter, the source of litter, which generally is plastic. And we recognize the need for legislation, strong legislation to combat the petroleum industry generally. But I, I'd like to say that it started out at the beginning and the parents were needing to do something and want bringing their family, their kids to participate. But it evolved into something where the kids are bringing their parents to participate. And they're coming from all over. And there's a great need in our society and there's a great need in our, in our Bay Area and our county to do something. We have to help the planet, we all know that. And this is an easy way to start, and it's just a springboard for what's possible. I'd like to turn it over to Margo.
This was unexpected. I just want to add that since 2014, we've been keeping data. Data is really important. We just reached a milestone of since 2014, 1.9 million cigarette butts collected. And you probably know cigarette butts are super toxic, and so we don't want them anywhere in our waterways or on the, on our paths, on our beaches. So that's just one, one little data point for you. Thank you for this recognition.
And I'd like to acknowledge the many volunteers that have stepped up to lead the course. And that's one of our biggest challenges is having enough volunteers to do the work to, to allow other volunteers to come participate. So we need leaders for that. So thank you for the acknowledgement. I would like to say we've been taking numbers since 2005, and we registered over 180,000 volunteers since then, and we've collected over 500,000 pounds of trash.
Thank you. And if that's, would like to go ahead and take a picture with you all on the board if you'd like to join me. Oh, we need it. I'm sorry, first I need a motion. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Thank you. No additional public comment from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
In Zoom, please click raise hand to comment for item three for the 2024 Californian Nonprofit of the Year. No hands raised, Mr. President.
I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Kanaba?
Yes.
President Slocum?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you Supervisor Mueller for bringing that forward. Appreciate it. Now we'll turn our attentions to matters set for a specified time, a time being 9:15. We're a little behind schedule, Mr. Clerk, but it's item number four on your agenda. And acting as the governing board of County Service Area Eight, we'll conduct a public hearing and will adopt the Garbage and Recyclable Collection Service Charges Report for County Service Area Eight, which is North Fair Oaks, for the fiscal year 24, '25. And, oh, I thought, okay, go ahead. Sorry, Effie.
Good morning, President Slocum, honorable members of the Board, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Niblin. My name is Effie Milionis Verducci. I'm the Assistant Director for the County Sustainability Department. Today, we're bringing forward for adoption the Garbage and Recyclables Collection Charges Report for County Service Area Number Eight, which we also...
Report for County Service Area Number Eight, which we also phrase as CSA Eight or North Fair Oaks for fiscal year 2024-2025. Adoption of this report is part of an annual procedural process to place the minimum level of garbage and recyclables collection service charges on the tax roll for residential dwellings in this service area, NFO. Per the county ordinance, any parcel that has a residential dwelling unit in CSA Eight is charged with the minimum level of garbage service, this being two 32-gallon carts or one 64-gallon cart at the curb. The minimum charge is based upon units on the parcel and is multiplied by the rates adopted by the board in January of this year. The charge is then placed on the tax roll in accordance with the county ordinance code. And after the opening and the closing of this public hearing, the next step would be for this board to consider adoption of the resolution for the collection charges report, which would then be filed with the Controller's Office. After that, the Controller's Office applies the charge amounts to the tax assessment for 2425. So that's our process. So today, we are requesting that you open a public hearing, close the public hearing, and adopt the recommended resolution that does the following. It adopts the Garbage and Recycling Collection Service Charges Report for CSA Eight for 2425. It approves the submittal of the report to the county controller by the Director of the Sustainability Department. It authorizes the Director of the Sustainability Department to refund any overcharges resulting from data, data entry, or computation errors. And then it authorizes the Director of the Sustainability Department to revise the Garbage and Recyclables Collection Charges Report as a result of any parcel changes received from the county assessor or county controller. And then finally, to approve the submittal of the revised charges report filed with the county controller. And that is our presentation for today. I can take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member questions? Don't appear to be any. Mr. Clerk, should we do public comment now or after? Okay.
Yes, we can. Because with unanimous consent, we can open the public hearing.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Public hearing is now open. I don't have any speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand to comment on the public hearing, item number four for County Service Area Number Eight, North Fair Oaks. Final call for public hearing, item number four. No comments, Mr. President.
Thank you. Close the public hearing without objection. And do somebody want to make?
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution, one, two, three, and four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Roll call. Sure. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Kanapa?
Yes.
And President Slocum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for the report. Next is County Executive Matter, item number five, which is a Measure K Adopt a Resolution Authorizing and Directing the President of the Board of Supervisors to Execute an Agreement with the Second Harvest of Silicon Valley to Provide Food Assistance Services to Low-Income Residents of San Mateo County in the amount of $2 million for the term July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Is that Ms. Rodriguez?
Good morning, Supervisors. This is part of the Children and Families Allocation of Measure K Priority Area, and it's a $2,000, $2 million grant for Second Harvest. The food need in the county still persists with the high inflation and what have you. And the board had approved moving forward a $2 million allocation to Second Harvest for the next three years.
So it's $2 million spread over three years. Is that right?
$2 million each year.
Each year.
Total of six.
Yep. Thank you. Board member, anything, questions?
I want to thank you for bringing it forward. This is such a need right now.
Yep. I agree. Mr. Clerk?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand for item five regarding Second Harvest of Silicon Valley. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you. Roll call.
We need a motion.
Motion, sorry.
I'd like to motion to approve this item, and I just wanted to briefly say that I agree with Supervisor Mueller's statement. This is very much a need. I don't think folks realize that after the pandemic, the need for food has only increased for Second Harvest Food Bank. And, you know, the, one of the impacts of inflation has been just so many more people needing that extra bit of help. So this is really important. I'm glad we're doing it. Did I motion? I did, I think.
I don't remember.
Okay. I motioned to move forward this agenda item, item five.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yeah, I'm just going to add to the public, please give. Donations have dropped off considerably to Second Harvest Food Bank. If you have the means, they need it now. Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Kanapa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on, item number six is a Measure K Adopt a Resolution Authorizing a One-Time Grant of District Discretionary Funds Not to Exceed $75,000 to United Through Education or Otherwise Known As Familias Unidas for the Creation of a New Radical Monarchs Troop in North Fair Oaks and Costs Associated with Implementation of the Three-Year Curriculum and Authorizing the County Executive or His Designee to Execute the Said Agreement. This is being brought forward by District Four. And $75,000 will go to create this Radical Monarchs Troop in North Fair Oaks. And it's an amazing program. Let me just say that right at the outset. Radical Monarchs Organization, inspired by the legacies of social justice movements, began in 2014 to create opportunities for young girls and diverse youth to form fierce friendships and celebrate their identities and contribute radically to their communities. This new troupe will engage a group of, I think it's third to fifth graders, if I'm not mistaken, in their program. And I would ask for your approval, and perhaps, I'm not sure if she's prepared, but our diversity officer might want to say a few words. I don't, I don't know. Shereen, did you want to say a comment or two? I would. Come on down.
I'm happy to see this on the agenda. This is something that I have been volunteering, an organization, a national organization that I've been volunteering for, just started a troupe on my own in San Francisco and have been, had the pleasure of watching young girls, gender expansive youth from diverse backgrounds really identify ways to empower themselves and their identities and engage in their communities in ways that they had not otherwise had the opportunity to do so from an empowered stance. It is modeled after the concept of the Girl Scouts, but it has a focus on social justice and community and civic engagement, particularly for those who have been marginalized historically, for example. And so this is a pivotal period in their lives, as President Slocum mentioned, between third and sixth grade, where they have the opportunity to step into their power, hold their identity, and also engage in their communities and therefore expand their, how we think about inclusive democracy. We're really excited about the potential of partnering with Familias Unidas to move this work forward for the youth and the community of North Fair Oaks.
And thank you for all your hard work on this. It's been a pleasure working with you to create this new program, if approved, today. So thank you for the presentation. I'm sorry to put you on the spot like that. Any questions? No questions? Okay. Public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from chambers. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand in Zoom to comment for item number six, District Four Measure K Item for a New Radical Monarchs Troop in North Fair Oaks. No comments, Mr. President.
Thank you. Would you mind if I made the motion to approve this? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve $75,000 in discretionary Measure K funds that would go to Familias Unidas for the Creation of a Radical Monarchs Troop in North Fair Oaks, and it would cover the cost of any associated implementation with the three-year curriculum and authorize the County Executive to execute such grant agreement.
Second.
Thank you. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Kanapa? And President Slocum?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, it's another Measure K request brought to you by yours truly. And it's a request for $30,000 to support the operation of MELP/AbelCloset for FY2425, providing an exception to the criteria for district discretionary Measure K funds to allow for advanced payment and authorizing the County Executive to execute said grant agreement. I met the program people for this at an event in North Fair Oaks, at the clinic, actually. And I was really impressed with their story. And basically, what they do, board members, is they loan out medical equipment to families that need it. So for instance, if you had a knee operation and you needed a temporary scooter to get around on, they will loan you for free the scooter. You obviously have to return it, but that's what they do, is they loan out medical equipment. And it's just so needed and such a big help, I believe in the program. And it's, as I said, it's all at no cost, which is pretty amazing. So I would ask for your approval, and I'd make a motion to approve this Measure K request. But of course, we have public comment and...
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand in Zoom to comment for item seven, District Four Measure K Item to MELP AbelCloset. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller? Thank you, Supervisor Kanapa? President Slocum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Appreciate that, colleagues. I think that's the end of the agenda. It doesn't seem possible.
We do have a closed session, but nothing to report out.
Okay. Very good. Okay? We'll stand adjourned.
Thank you. All the time is now 10:03 a.m. The meeting is now adjourned.